Okay, welcome everybody. Like to call the January 16th Town Council meeting in session. Would you raise your hand for the pledge of allegiance? Chief Higley, would you lead us, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Public comment. Anybody in the council chambers would like to come up? Please state your name, your address.
Greg Kaminski.
You'll come up to the podium, Greg. State your name, address, and please keep it under five minutes. And if you get close to five minutes, I'll just give you a little nod as to 15 seconds beforehand.
Okay, hi, everybody. My name is Greg Kaminski, and I have lived in the East Farms area of town for more than 60 years on Peatmont Drive. That's near South Road where those buildings are being built so close to the road. In any event, for both my wife, Zoanna, and myself, I'm speaking against the rejection of well-qualified candidate Matt Huckbancher as the Democratic Town Committee's choice to replace Patty Boy Williams on the Board of Ed. There is a fair and time-honored process for either party to replace an outgoing member who is serving in an elected position, which the Democrats follow, but the Republican members of this council disrespectfully ignored the endorsed candidate and made their own choice. At a time when our community, like most others, is craving genuine compromise and collaboration, this action sets the Town Council and the Board of Ed members at odds with each other and clearly taints Mr. Skelly's future input on the board. And I think you should rectify this, and he should resign. It's my opinion. So Matt Huckbancher was the properly chosen replacement for the seat on the Board of Ed, and he should have been approved. So, thanks for your time. Thank you.
Tim.
I'm going to turn this way since I'm addressing you folks. Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. First of all, Happy New Year, and congratulations to each of you on winning your council seat, although you hardly get much time to get warmed up before budget season rolls around. On the topic of budget, we are, of course, supposed to be committed to pushing inflation back down to 2%. It's a national strategy, but obviously can't happen unless we execute locally. So I think 2% is a good target for us to adopt. We're fortunate here in Farmington. For many years, we've been a well-managed town, and we have no glaring operational shortcomings. This is particularly important in Farmington since last year we raised the property tax almost 10% on our average residential homeowner. I would strongly recommend this council set your expectations early to all departments, from largest to smallest. It also makes for a more productive budget cycle. I recall a couple of issues still outstanding from last year's budget deliberations. In the school budget, it was the issue of open-choice funding. So Farmington schools spend a little over $20,000 per student on average, but we only receive about $8,000 per student in funding. Now, maybe $8,000 per student made sense 30 years ago when they started the program, but it leaves us with a $1.5 million shortfall, which is significant in a town our size and needs to be fixed. The second issue was on the town budget side and really is about the tax burden shift. So the property eval process that was recently completed shifted more of our tax burden onto homeowners from commercial properties. And it's hard to believe, but the next eval occurs in just about two years. There's no reason to assume we won't see another significant tax burden shift. So how do we buffer this impact in order not to drop the hammer on homeowners all at once? By the way, when a tax shift happens, it magnifies the pain of any existing or new project cost on the residential taxpayers. So I guess if we decide that we really can't or won't do anything on the topic, we should probably give folks a heads-up that says, hey, you know, here's the estimated cost of this, and it may look like a buck 3.80 a day to you, but in two years, it's really not going to be that. So, you know, don't call Town Hall when you get your tax bill. Anyway, on these issues, since they may not be easy, we should probably start early, and they may also be great topics for our state reps. And then lastly here regarding strategic goals, I think we all know it's easier to spend money than to save it. So I would propose that for every three program spending initiatives that we have, we need to come up with one meaningful cost-saving initiative. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
Hello.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Malvika Vidhvas. I live at 1 Stratford Road in Farmington. I was here for the December meeting last month, and I was hoping that that was it. However, unfortunately, I'm here again on this cold winter night. At the last meeting, the council chair and the three Republicans on this committee blocked the valid and appropriate appointment of Matt Hutwagner, proposed by the Democratic members. This was a vacancy that needed to be filled due to the Board of Education member Patty Boy Williams' accession to the Town Council. While rare, parties have blocked the other party's nominations in the past. Typically, a rejected nominee results in the party that holds the seat returning with a new nominee for consideration. However, these Republicans already had their nominee ready without consulting or even informing the other party. And this nominee, apparently a registered Democrat, is actually a longtime Republican donor whose spouse is a member of the Farmington Republican Town Committee. This shocking behavior goes against council norms and is in opposition to the spirit of vacancy, of the vacancy which is a Democratic seat for the Democrats to fill, to have a token Democrat ready with direct ties to the Republican Town Committee's stinks of petty politicking. Also, it is surprising that one of the Republican council members, whose wife works in the local Farmington school, does not recuse himself from a vote that directly impacts the board that is closely associated with his spouse's work. The new council chair, whose campaign materials claimed the town needed leaders who are willing to put politics aside and promised to bring people together, and the rest of the town Republicans who decry ties to the national party's antics in their first official acts are sowing seeds of division and partisan politics. If they cannot win the seats, will they continue to steal them? If such behavior continues, our town suffers, and in this case, the children of our town also suffer. So I'm hoping that things change going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Chief.
Good evening, and I want to reiterate congratulations to all of you. I know what it takes to be a volunteer. It's a lot of time commitment, so it doesn't go unnoticed. We appreciate it. Rich Higley, 292 Scott Swamp in Farmington, also the fire chief for Tonks and So's. Chief Graboulis, Chief Soplinsky couldn't make it, so I'm going to speak on their behalf as well, if that's okay. I'm here tonight, I understand you're talking about the strategic plan. I'm here tonight to ask that you keep the firehouse renovations, if you haven't seen it, I'm sure you will, in your plan. I'm here tonight on behalf of the 130-plus volunteers. This has been on the list for quite some time. Office of Town Manager is very much aware of it. There's a lot of projects in town, and we certainly understand that. It's nice to see the high school done, it's nice to see the 1928 building, but I think we think it's time to look at the firehouses. We had a facility study analysis in 2015. 2018, we did a location analysis with a report published. In 2019, we had a Town Council tour in 2020, and we just had the most recent analysis that the Town Manager conducted, which was 2023. I think it's better probably to just take another tour. Our doors are always open. Love to show you the firehouses, love to show you the challenges. It's not just the deferred maintenance, it's really a lack of space. A lot of things have changed over the years, so we appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing anybody else in chambers. Kat, do we have anybody else in the Zoom land?
I don't see any hands raised.
We'll give it another couple of seconds. Anybody else in Zoom would like to make a public comment? Nothing? Okay. We will close out public comment. Thank you. D1.
Chair, I'm D1. I'd like to make a motion to discuss and adopt the 2024-2026 Town of Farmington Strategic Plan Town Manager Goals.
A second?
We got a motion and a second.
Joe, what I thought, if it would be okay, that maybe I'd go down there and sit and face you guys. We're going to have a PowerPoint presentation and do it that way.
Sir.
Back and forth?
Thank you.
Kat, you'll drive?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. So you had in your packet the strategic plan. I hope it wasn't too confusing for you with the colors and different things, but once we get through it and go through it, I think you'll understand it better. So we've been doing the strategic plan. Whoops, I'm sorry, Joe. Could you just hand me my book? Forgot my book. Our first strategic plan was adopted in July of 2005, so quite a long time ago. And the meat of the strategic plan are basically the first two columns of the plan. And then on the last section are the goals that each council adopts every two years. Some of the goals keep on going year after year after year. Some of the goals, when you do it, are one-year goals, some of them are two-year goals, some of them take many, many years to go. So it just really depends. We can adopt changes in the deliverables or the desired outcomes, but typically, we haven't done that about, I don't know how many years ago. We created a new overall goal, which was recreation. So that was something, and then we created that. So the document is a fluid document. We consider on the end that your goals and my goals, and so when we create those goals, of course, there's a lot more things going on, and that's what's in the regular plan, but it's items that the council, I think, puts a high priority on. It's what I report on to the council, it's what I'm graded on at the end of my evaluation. So anything that goes in that last column, it's either myself, the staff, or the council participation in that. So it's always important to me, because I like to, I'm being graded on it, you're being graded on it, that we have a realistic expectation of what can be done. And you'll also see in the goals is that one of the things when we started it is that it's important not to just have what I say is topic goals, like we're finishing the high school. Yes, of course, we're doing that. But part of my job is to staff the council. And so there's a goal in here that says that that's what my job is, and I'm getting graded on that, to make sure the council agendas are done. My, also a big portion of my job is to direct all the other departments. So I'm, there's a goal that talks about just management of the departments. So it's a combination of like specific types of initiatives, it's about committees, and it's also about me and what my staff has to do. So it's a general kind of comprehensive plan. It also helps that there's always different things that come up through the years, and yes, we're not so rigid that we can't shift a little bit, but really, things, we're not in the business that at every single meeting, a new initiative comes up, and we try to do that initiative, and then because we don't have the time or the money, and it distracts us from what our goals are. So we really try to stay on task of what the goals are. And again, I'm talking really kind of big-picture items. And if halfway through the year, all of a sudden, this huge initiative comes, it's time to reevaluate the goals and most times take something else off, or make sure you have money for it. Because one, which leads me to the next one, which would be how we kind of try to give a icon of cost, complexity of policy, staff workload, and town workload. And again, this is a real kind of just simple chart that it's the timeframe of, you know, is it immediate? Is it the cost? Is it going to cost a lot? The complexity, one of the things that you'll find out is that certain things, really, the complexity of it is sometimes the most difficult part of it, is getting the public around it, understanding the topic. And then the workload of how much work, is it a committee meeting that takes one or two times a month that you will be doing? Or is it something that me and the staff, it's a high level? So we try to give a grade for everything, and if you see something that has all reds on each one of these goals, you know that this is a project that's probably going to cost a lot of money, take a lot of time, and it's complex. And you, we do a lot of times have a lot of reds or a lot of different things, but when we look at the plan overall at the end of the night, I want to look through and see what all these reds are and what the workload is for myself and my staff, but also for you all, your volunteers. And it is important to make sure that we don't take on too much, because one of the things that is important to get things done is that you need to build collaboration on some of these topics, and to get collaboration, you need the council in it from the very beginning. It's not just that the staff can come up with their ideas. We, from a long time since this policy, have put the council in these working groups with the staff to kind of come up with plans, process, policy, so that we all can move it forward. So again, we'll start, and what I have, and this is my recommendations, is that we started with what the established goal is, and some of it, again, these were established back in 2022, so some of them have already been done, some of them, they're still in progress. So I'm either saying, I'm asking to modify the goal, I'm asking to delete the goal, or changing it maybe from a priority one to a priority two. So if we start on the first page, and you can see is the Parsons property. And many of you may be aware of that, is that the Town of Farmington has recently signed a long-term lease with the state of Connecticut for the Parsons property. It's taken, the town was planning on potentially maybe buying it, giving it to us, what it was going to use for. This has been on the goals for many, many years. It is now that we are getting a long-term lease with them. We have signed the lease documents, but now it's going through the state process of getting approvals. And so as, if it's any indication of how long it's taken us to get to where we are, I think this potentially could take us a lot of time. My goal would be to establish an ad hoc committee of Town Council members and staff to discuss the future of the Parsons property and make recommendations. What we have agreed upon as a council, and this is what the lease said, it's modified open space, so it can be used for, our historic building wants to go on there from the Historic Society, they would like to put their building on it. Some basic benches, maybe a parking lot, so people in the village can park there, but all of that has to be designed, all of it has to be funded, and we have to get the lease document. So I'm recommending that this goal stay on the goals, but we make it a priority two, because right now, we'll mow it, it'll look nice, but it's not setting up another committee, because again, setting up, if you can see, all the reds, it's expensive, it's complex, and it takes a ton of time. And when you go through the rest of the plan, you'll see we have lots of other complex things that are going to take a lot of time. So my recommendation would be, is that this would be considered next year in our time. Joe, do you want me and council kind of to go through everything once and then have comments, or would you want to have comments on each one?
Let's just take them as we go.
Okay.
So we could just, now we do, we'll just work through the document, get our comments done, and then go to the next.
Okay, so right, so now, any comments or thoughts on this goal?
So the question I have, Kathy, is, I know it's gone, I know you've executed it on our end, and it's gone to the state of Connecticut now for final disposition of the lease.
Yep.
So, you know, typically, when it went over back to DOT, there were no questions. Everything had been already kind of negotiated, everything seemed to be in order, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think the legal process that I understand is that you have a state properties review board.
Yep.
And the lease, DOT brings their leases to that board.
Yep.
And then it basically is a public meeting that's held, I believe, almost once a week and/or once every two weeks.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering, is there a way to find out where this is in the queue with the state properties review board as far as the final approval on the lease?
Sure, I can ask. I can ask where it is.
Right.
Yep, that's not a problem. It's, again, you know, if we get the lease, again, my thing.
I understand your big move. Your big move is that we have a lot of things, we have the biggest project.
Right.
I totally agree with what you're, how you set the table, where this stands as a priority.
Right.
I just, I guess what I want to make sure, at least from my vantage point, is that somehow this thing isn't hung up somewhere, because to me, it sounds like we've signed it, DOT's agreed, it seems like the last hurdle here is the state properties review board. I would just hate to find out six months downstream here that there's some other impact that, you know, we're unaware of. I don't think it's going to take a heck of a lot of work. You know, I don't expect anybody to write letters and have meetings. I think it's just maybe like a quick phone call.
Yeah, I can absolutely make a quick phone call, but really, who the person that you should be speaking to on this is. And I can follow up with our state representatives.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Again, unfortunately, and we've learned through history, that the DOT does not take their marching orders through me, and so I can definitely ask our representatives, and maybe when they come at the next meeting, we can ask them to follow up where it is. But I have no problem following it up where.
And the way I would quantify that is DOT doesn't take marching orders, but DOT is a public agency that is accountable to some degree to the state tax figure. I know we, they have a level of engagement that they like to have the ivory tower over on the Burlington Turnpike, but let's see if we can, you know, continue to, you know, drill down on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, last time Mike was here, Mike was also frustrated by DOT and he's been barking at them for a couple of years.
Yeah.
I know he has been equally flummoxed by them.
Yeah, I don't know if they're still not fully 100% in workplace, and I think that's where some of our problems have been coming into, where some people are in office, some people are not in office, and there's not great communication going on on that side of it. But obviously, between the Town Manager and hopefully, we can get Representative D'Amico to try to push further into it to get a hard date or some type of great information.
Yeah, just kind of, yeah, see if we can.
Yeah, there's no problem, Ted. They had written back, and they said it was going through the process, so it's not a big deal about sending something and saying, could you give me an estimated timeline that you think it would take to go through the process?
Perfect.
It's not a big deal.
Amy, you have anything?
No.
Anybody else? Patty?
Kathy, it's, I mean, I understand the lease has been signed, and I think in some extent, it goes to timing. Deep is in the process of completely revising their remediation regulations, which are no longer going to be transfer-based. So the lease avoided the Transfer Act completely, and now they're going to be discovery of something on the property, and it's going to be based on, and the regulations are way too preliminary to evaluate, other than we know that it's likely going to be an owner or an occupier of the property. If they discover the contamination, they're going to be responsible for it. So the timing of this, there's the potential that the, when we start parking lot and other types of work, that something else is going to be discovered. I know there've been Phase Ones and other investigation done. So in terms of, I have not seen the lease, and it's not really to get into the terms of the lease now, but I want to make sure that as we're thinking about the timing and how this goes in terms of planning strategically, that we're making sure as well that the town is protected either through the terms of the lease or some other way for the purposes of not having to be responsible for something that might be discovered later.
We can definitely look at that for sure. And, you know, you would know better than I when it comes to those types of things. I mean, it's my understanding that when we went through all the due diligence, is that the property itself is considered clean, and that's, it is considered clean, but I don't know what that means in the environmental world.
And it means completely different things under today's world versus what they're proposing in the new regulations.
Okay, so that could cause us some problems.
The new regulations are basically saying one drop.
Yeah, so that could definitely cause us some problems.
Thank you.
Okay.
Brian, and Ethan.
I'm not going to add anything to that level of expertise, so I'm good.
Excellent. All right. Thank you.
All right. Goal two is to, the existing goal is to manage actions taken to improve traffic problems, including meeting with the state DOP, DOT on a quarterly basis, report on the following projects to the Town Council. So if you can see here, these were the goals of the individual state projects. The first one was Route 4 project to conduct a review of the options of post-construction traffic study, which we did do, and that's complete. The LoSIP grant was used for the roundabout on South Road, that is done. The Brickyard Road pavement, that is done. The river crossing, additional river crossing, that is ongoing, and it will be moved to the next, to this year. And the future sidewalk on Route 4, that was in interest of the council to see what the gaps were, that was complete. I would recommend that we move what that information was to a future goal, which would be a sidewalk committee goal, but that was done. My modified goal was to improve traffic programs and still meet with on a quarterly basis to the DOT, and, actually, this is, I see an error here. It was really to, if you flip this around, it's Connecticut Department of Transportation as needed, because that's really where we go now, and to report to the Town Council on a quarterly basis. So this is just backwards. Sorry. So the next stage is the new bridge. Continue to move forward with public outreach and work with CROG and DOT to identify potential funding sources for the preliminary design. So that's the next step of the project, is getting a design. Burlington Road reconstruction, we received a big grant for that, so we have to continue receiving our approvals, bid and award the project this winter and construct in the summer and fall of 2024, and then recommend we move all the projects and replace with the new projects. So those would be my thoughts for this goal.
Okay. Brian, do you have anything?
Actually, really, just one question after hearing that, and that is, I remember the last time we did some sidewalk bidding, it took a long time, and I think it was because of COVID. Is the bidding process for getting things done almost in the same year kind of in line and in better shape?
It depends who's running the project. If the town's running the project and we're doing the bidding, it's moving relatively fast. If it's going through the state agencies, it's not going fast.
Do we know which one this is doing?
The Burlington, well, no, they're going through the state.
Oh, well, then all bets are off.
Yeah.
Nope, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, it's definitely, we're going back and forth with Burlington Road right now. The new bridge project, we're still, that is moving along, we're just looking for funding sources, but Burlington Road has been going back and forth with some of the processes.
Good luck.
On the new bridge and moving forward, the public outreach and preliminary design, I looked at the prior traffic study. It evaluated the roads that are currently impacted with heavy traffic. There's significant concern, however, for the neighborhood.
They did update on that.
It's been updated.
Yeah, because that was one of the comments that they did, is that they asked, and then at one of the public hearings, they said we didn't do the outside roads around it, and so they included that into the existing study that they're doing.
So the Oak Ridge neighborhood is included.
Exactly. Thank you. They did do that.
They got all but one.
Which one did they miss?
My street. I'll be on that one, too.
Sarah, do you have anything? Keith?
Other than that comment, nothing.
Amy?
Other than that, no.
Dave?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you very much. Onto the next one.
Goal three, this is our Bike and Trail Advisory Committee, and the status of that is ongoing, and I don't recommend any change. And again, this is, if you can see in our chart, it's basically green. It's not a huge lift for either the staff or the Town Council, but it's a good goal. Any questions on that?
Anybody have anything on that?
Just joined them this week, they're doing a great job, and they have some great projects coming up that look really promising.
Good.
And they're still green.
Good. Perfect.
Still green. All right. Moving on.
The goal four was to complete the Main Street sidewalk project, so that was complete. So I'm recommending we delete that goal. Any questions on that?
Anybody have anything on that one? Moving on.
Goal five was the Farmington High School Building Committee and the building of the new high school. Goal five was the Farmington High School Building Committee and the building of the new high school. So that's ongoing, and I recommend no changes except on the top, on the deliverable. That really, that's just old language I saw, so I'd cut that out. But again, this is a big priority project for the town.
Which should be coming in to an end pretty soon.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for Kathy on the school?
I guess the only question I have on this is, I know we had to make a change in the last, right? You, one of the consultants needed to be kind of separated from the project. Russ Arnold has obviously taken a larger role on the project to be the project manager to the completion of the high school. And I just, I just, are we, I mean, he's got a lot on his plate and I'm just, you know, this is, this is a big kind of nine-month period. So I know he's getting support from other consultants or how is that?
Well, we do have an architect and we have a.
Yes, we recently added an owners representative firm to support Russ in the goal of finishing this new building in the next nine months. And then with the renovation of the 900 wing, which follows from 2024 into 2025, they would kind of take the lead on that.
So it's kind of flip-flop.
Just the goal was to get it done, you know.
No, no, no.
Get the new building done.
Totally behind the goal.
And support.
Totally behind, just, you know. Obviously, when you, when you know that that's a lot of work that has to take place, hopefully he's got the support that he needs to make sure he gets.
Well, we've been doing it for about two months now, right?
Since October.
October.
Yeah, no, I know it's, yeah, I know it was captured in the November, the last meeting minutes that were published, so I know it was captured there.
Yeah. But we, it's a valid point. We are watching it. He has a big job in general here in the town of Farmington, but it seems to be working out really well for both the building committee and for Russ right now.
Anybody else on goal five?
Just to follow up on Dave's comment, a lot of these goals have red in staff.
Yeah.
And red in the dollar value. And this to me is a big one and a high priority item. I think, big picture, looking at the whole thing, I have concerns about whether or not we actually have enough staff in in order to accomplish everything that's here.
I think we can definitely have that conversation at the end after we go through everything. You know, I do think that we are somewhat stretched on some different, some of these goals. I mean, obviously, we should evaluate at the end if there's any that we can make priority two at least, and then look in a year if we can take on those goals or if we can't take them on. And and that's, again, one of the reasons why the Parsons one was, became a priority in my mind, a priority two. But there's going to be other ones too with the staff, staff and council workload.
Right, right.
Anybody else for number five?
Goal six is the fire station building committee, and that moved, I'm moving that recommending from a priority two to a priority one. And no changes other than updating its priority status. One of the things which Chief Higley just mentioned is that, again, there's space needs, yes, but one of the more pressing issues are is that our fire stations inside infrastructure, the heating, the boilers and that type of things are all on their last legs. And the last study that we had done was we had the architect go through and prioritize all the buildings, all the inside, what's the word, Kat? Not sounds the.
HVAC.
HVAC, everything. And this group now is really ready to go to set up a building committee. It's not, it's not a really complicated, complicated project. That's why my complexity is a yellow. It's really just setting up a building committee. It's costly, but I will say to Chief Higley, they've been waiting patiently to move this up. It's in our financial forecasting. We've been ready to do it, but we're really getting to a point where the heat doesn't work, the air conditioning doesn't work, the buildings really need an overall update. And they're like, we've done every study, we have it ready to go. I think it should be a priority one that we set up a building committee very soon and start moving this forward. You know, I feel strongly that we're gonna, we're gonna be spending a lot of money with Band-Aid repairs. And I think one of the fire stations, they said we can't even repair it. It's just, it's, it's not, we can't do it. So anyway, so that's where we are with the fire stations.
No, and I thank the volunteers and the chiefs for their patience. I know this has been on our, our plate for a couple of times. We had to push it aside for the high school and such and COVID, so I do appreciate your patience with it. I do think that we need to start looking into this now and start moving forward with it.
Brian, any questions?
Well, just, just one on the staff. I mean, obviously, it's a very worthwhile and necessary project. We've been talking about staff bandwidth. How does this impact staff bandwidth since it's red?
It's, again, it's another goal that, you know, that has staff. But again, I keep on going back to the Parsons. I don't mean to go back to it, but that goal has taken a ton of time over the course of the years. You know, we had Parsons goals. We don't have that goal, so maybe some of the staff that were doing that can now do this. Our fire director would be involved. He's not involved in some of these other goals, so he would be involved in this goal. So I think there is the bandwidth on a goal like this to help out. On a goal because it's high priority, of course, people like Kat and people in my office, myself, would be overseeing it. But I don't, I'm not sure that we'd actually be the total staff liaison. We'd probably have the fire director being involved and different things like that. So again, it's restructuring how we, some of the things, but I do think it would be important to move, start moving this forward.
Agreed, just thinking of what you're saying and.
Yeah, no, I.
Bandwidth is important.
I appreciate that.
Patty, anything?
Nope.
Sarah? Keith? Amy? Dave?
Good.
All right, thank you.
This is the 1928 Newtown Hall building, and that's ongoing, and I'm recommending no change on that.
All right, we are obviously working on that one with all of our subcommittees going on. Any questions, Dave?
No, I have no questions.
Amy?
No.
Keith?
No, sir.
On this side, Sarah? Patty?
No.
Brian?
I'm good.
Onward and upward.
Next one is goal eight, that's our land acquisition committee, and that's an ongoing committee, and I don't recommend any changes on that.
No, and obviously, being on that with Brian, I think we've been moving along and obviously trying to get some things moving forward. But I see the way we've been going is the way we should be going, and hopefully we can continue it at the pace we're at. Anything to add, Brian, about it since you're there?
Absolutely the same. We've been doing a good job.
Excellent.
Well, it's not really us to judge.
Patty, anything?
No.
Sarah? Keith? Amy, Dave?
No, I'm fine.
Thank you.
The next goal is goal nine, and that's that the town of Farmington participates in regional and state economic development activities. This goal is on for a couple of reasons. One is that I think it's important for the council and for Rose Ponte, who's our director, to know that this is an important goal for the council, to have it high visibility, that she spends a lot of her time doing these types of things. So, and we do report on it, and I think it's important for the council, obviously, to be up to speed on what's going on regionally and locally and statewide on, for economic development issues. So she does a very nice report, but she does spend a lot of time participating in different things that have to do with this topic.
No, I can agree, and obviously, being into a couple of meetings now with the manufacturers and Rose being there and her contacts with the state and with our, you know, US senators and stuff to get people involved. I think she has been a great assist, asset, and I think she's been very, very well informed and keeps us well informed to what's going on, to what's going for our economic stuff.
Dave, anything?
No.
Amy?
No.
I just echo what you said. The economic newsletter that comes out, they do a really good job of, anybody who wants that information can find it. She makes it readily available, and she's also a really good ambassador for every business in town, knowing a few of the business owners in town. She checks in with everybody, so I think this is one that we're really nailing from a town perspective.
The next goal is.
Anything?
Oh, sorry, excuse me.
That's all right, anybody?
I just, I appreciate, I know Rose, I know all the work she does. I appreciate everything she does for the town. And I think in light of some of the public comment this evening as well, having this goal be forefront is important to continue to have, to look at the commercial and industrial space for the support of the tax, of the tax burden in the community.
And I echo everyone's praise of Rose, her leadership and the visibility she brings to Farmington. Excellent. We're lucky to have her.
Thank you. Yes, we are. Number 10.
10 is the budget goal, so it's, last year's budget was complete, so this is no change other than changing the years of the budget.
And we start this process next week.
Anything you want to add? Probably just wait until next week to dive into that one.
Right.
The next goal is the ARPA funds, and that was complete. So I recommend that we delete that goal. The next goal is that we meet with our Farmington delegation on a yearly basis, and that we did that last year. I don't recommend any change. I think it's valuable to have them come in once a year and talk to us just about different items, and they're slated to come in for the February meeting.
Correct. Anybody have anything about that? Obviously, we'll get some good questions for our representatives.
The next one is, this is what I was talking about earlier, just that manage, my job is to manage the departments, look at different cost efficiencies, specific goals, the strategic plan, review programs, and utilizing best practices. So obviously, this is a majority of my time is spent on this goal.
No, obviously, I think, you know, as people get more into it, I know for myself, Brian's been here and Keith, when Russ has come up and introduced ways for us to save money that have been cost effective as far as maybe the millings or doing our own wood milling of the crosses for the rails of trails. So I really do appreciate your staff. They always do look out in order to try to save us money in the long run.
Goal 14, I recommend no change. It's just that I provide a yearly report on all the goals. We do have a quarterly report that comes out quarterly, but at the end of each year, you get a whole synopsis of the year from me.
Anybody have anything?
Goal 15 is manager and manage and monitor all COVID-related issues, provide quarterly reports. Duncan Wood putting complete, and, you know, we still are doing a little bit of that. Kat, in my office, we are doing monitoring different things and following procedures of, but I don't think it needs to be on the the main goals at this point in time.
Anybody have any questions about that? All right.
Goal 16 is just my goal to provide you guys with technical information, policy, recommendations and legislative advice for each council meeting. So again, I put complete, it's really complete, ongoing, and I recommend no change.
Anything on that one, everybody? No one? Go ahead.
The next one is our racial equality task force moves forward with the goals of the town's action plan. The status is complete and ongoing. I'm recommending a modified goal, and it would be provide needed support to ensure the Human Relations Commission and the various subcommittees of the commission moves forward and receives the appropriate staffing and support to complete its objectives. So kind of merging the racial equality task force in with the Human Relations Commission and still supporting them. And like I said at the last meeting, this is a goal that's kind of in progress, and I think this is kind of a better way to do it at this point in time. But we could always come back to it if, you know, after the Human Relations Commission meets and see how it all, because there's some quirks in it. But I think that we have to, it's a work in progress.
Right, and I think we talked about it last time, Patty, how it's fluid and obviously, we have some issues as figuring as voting member, not voting member and stuff like that.
Right.
To see how it actually runs. Any other questions you want to follow up with?
Yeah, to that point, actually, I was wondering if the phrasing of the goal could be changed a little bit to make it clear that for the, if someone from the public were to pick this up, they're now going to see the new goal does not mention racial equality task force at all. So could we, because it's fluid and we don't know what it's going to be yet, can this be revised to somehow reference that combination is being explored or something, just to show that we're not getting rid of the racial equality task force, but it's going to be incorporated?
We could do a couple of things. I mean, I'm open to suggestions. We could say, and the various subcommittees, we could put then in parentheses, including the racial equality task force right there. Or we could, like you said, if you give me language, I'm open to something, you know, saying provides need to support, to ensure the Human Relations Commission slash racial equality task force.
I think I prefer the slash racial equality task force simply because we haven't formally made it a subcommittee yet of the Human Relations.
Yeah.
Commission, so that way it's.
I think, I think that's fine. Yeah.
Thank you. Brian?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Sarah? Dave?
Yeah, I think putting them on equal footing is what we need to do right now until we figure out the mechanizations of how this, you know, merger comes together and these, these relationships are broadened. So I, I think Patty's comments were spot on. I think our, I think what we're trying to respond to, to that is appropriate.
Sounds good.
Amy?
I agree.
Keith?
I agree, no problem.
Perfect, thank you, everybody.
Okay. Goal 18 is the Green Efforts, and that's our Green Efforts Committee. It's complete or ongoing, and I'm not recommending any changes to that at this point.
Any questions? Obviously, we still have to get our meeting off the ground, so. Anybody?
I'll defer to our DEP expert first before I say anything.
I do have a comment, and, and I think that, and the Green Efforts, the desired outcome includes waste reduction. And waste reduction is going to be a bigger and bigger issue in the coming years in light of the closing of the, the facility in Hartford and the increased costs of shipping waste out of state. And I think it would benefit the town, in particular, our residents to, for there to be some way to start looking at reduction of that, of the municipal solid waste in terms of the volume, because the price, the tipping cost per ton is going to increase significantly. And our residents, this was the first year I remember seeing an increase in the trash costs. And I assume that it's likely the first of many in light of what's happening with waste overall. And our residents would benefit if we could explore other ways to reduce waste. I know that there's been grant money available in the past for food waste for towns to look at municipal composting and food waste type opportunities. So it's more for me that I'd like it to be in the town's radar for when these grant opportunities arise, to know that, to, to think about how that can be incorporated. I know that there's a lot of priorities, but I think this would save residents money in the long term.
Has the state come back to you yet with anything, what they're moving forward with?
It's been relatively quiet recently, but I mean, it's a huge, it's a huge topic for sure about what we're going to do.
There's a lot of towns and cities that are impacted by that closure.
Right. We're on a, our regional group with it. Russ Arnold's very involved in it, I'm involved in it. But, I mean, we can, I mean, two ways. Typically, you know, again, I think, Amy, you're the new liaison. We could do it two ways, is that here verbally, you've expressed that, and then that could be something that when you guys set your goals and objectives up, you could set your goals and objectives up and try to put, push that up. And that would be what the staff priority would be. Or you could, we could make this more specific, but then I think what would happen then is that if it becomes part of that goal, that is going to happen, and other things on that Green Committee, which I'm not totally up to speed on what they're working on, is going to get bumped. So whatever you guys prefer, you know, I think it is something that's on the radar in general, but I think if you want to just pass that to Amy, and Amy, you try to get that, you know, as a thing, or we put it in the goal.
I defer to Amy as the, as the Green Efforts Town Council member. It's something I want to, just want to keep out there. And I know that for Amy's benefit, the committee had been exploring food waste and composting curbside. To, when Chris Fagan was the town council person, so I guess two years ago, it, and then it just petered off. But there was something that had been considered.
Right.
And in light of, the other issue is we had the textile recycling for four years. And that's no longer available to us, so that's also going to increase the.
Right.
Tonnage going into the waste stream, because if I recall, it was 10 or 11 tons of waste that was diverted as a result of that program.
No, that was, I was not totally surprised, but I was surprised on the number of how much was diverted. I think if I remember correctly, the DEP has set up like guidelines about, this is one of the big things that they want to do is have, you know, towns do certain programs to try to explore limiting some of the waste. So I think there's a playbook sort of there already, and the committee could look at some of the different things. I mean, it's coming down because you have to do something with the waste and without, you know, it's going to happen. So I think that we could have it as. So I think that we could have it as part of kind of the notes so that you and the Green Committee and that I pass it to, I think it's Shannon who, or Garrett that leads it, that this is a topic that we want to kind of keep on the radar.
What's our, our current contract was three years that we signed?
Four.
Four, sorry, the new, the new trash company that's shipping out of state for us?
You know, I don't want to say it because I can't remember.
I think it was, I thought it was between three to five years.
It was, it was a little.
With an option to renew.
Yeah, I think it was five, but I'm not sure, and Joe's not here, and he would know off the top of his head.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just agree. I think it's a big issue. I think we can all agree that it's a big issue. Obviously, when the trash energy plant went down in Hartford, and they didn't decide to reinvest in it and, you know, keep that relationship going, you know, it's, it's something that we, I think it's got to be on the radar screen. Hopefully, the Green Efforts Committee, I'm sure through the, through the, you know, the leadership of Amy, will, will have this on their radar, and we can, we can collectively really see what we can do to, you know, help all of us kind of get our arms around it. Because it's probably, it's probably, it's probably something residents, a lot of residents are thinking about. You know what I mean? Because, you know, you know, it's, it's just one of these things that isn't going to go away. And it's just, and the costs are going to be, you know, continually rising in the relationship that we have now that we have to, you know, truck the waste out of state. So I think it's an, it's an important thing to definitely have on the radar.
No doubt about it.
Right. I think, Amy, I don't know if Garrett or Shannon had reached out, but we just talked about it last week about kind of having, kind of a brainstorming, you having a brainstorming meeting with them and kind of setting up what they think the goals would be and trying to work with what, how busy the staff is and making sure we're having good use of our resources and things like that. Because there are, there is so much that you could potentially be doing and, you know, trying to get the best bang for our buck, you know, staff-wise, everything.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Goal 19. So this is a goal about, we did some updates over the last year. We hired a full-time, her title is Management Assistant, but she also is the communication person for the town. That's Amanda in my office. I don't know if anyone has noticed some of the different things, but she does a lot of the EDC stuff. She does a lot of the communication on the website. And this was one of our goals that we upgraded a bunch of different things. I'm not saying that this goal should be deleted because I think it is a goal, but sometimes what we do is that it becomes on the town managers' goals, and then they, if, we don't get rid of them, but they become part of the department head goal. And so I'm recommending that this goal just get moved into the Management Assistant goals.
Any questions about it? Brian?
No, we've been doing a good job. You know, we did talk a while back, I don't know if this is the right place to talk about, we had talked about the possibility of an email blast that goes directly to residents as an opt-in thing if we need to get information out quickly and directly so that people don't always go to the website. As easy as it can be, it could certainly be better. But is there the option for a direct email blast with pertinent information?
What is our system called?
We, we do have EverBridge where people can opt in.
That's for emergency stuff.
It's also for agendas, town news, recreation sense things.
Have we ever used it for that?
Yeah, even continuing edu, excuse me, continuing education sense updates. So we can, you can choose what you'd like to receive information for, and then you can get.
Wouldn't be, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to do a push on getting people to sign up for it again, because there's a ton of people signed up, and you can sign up if you are interested in recreation programs, then anytime there's up, recreation comes and different things.
And then maybe take advantage of some of the things that are already there, so we're utilizing it more to the town's benefit.
Yeah, that would be a great idea.
Kathy?
Yes.
Didn't we also use that for the building committee or the ad hoc committees to get that news out?
Yeah, we did that too.
It would also be another, I know that there's a lot of vacancies right now on the boards and committees. It could be another way too to get people, to make people aware that there are other opportunities to volunteer and help the town.
That's a good idea.
Yep, that's a good idea.
And obviously, I know EverBridge was started through the phones.
I'm sorry, what was that?
EverBridge, I think the original idea was all phones.
Right.
And obviously, now with phones going obsolete as far as house phone numbers, it's harder to get cell phone numbers and stuff like that, so we do need to do like a little bit of a push to receive people's emails. We really would have people's email addresses, so.
Speaking of, I just got a text from the schools, two hour delay tomorrow.
It's Keith.
Your town at work.
Somebody in town's using it.
Yeah. All right, but, okay, so.
Anybody else have anything on that one?
I think, I just agree with the comments there. I think it'd be good to re-energize it to whatever degree we can.
Skateboard park at Tungusus Mead, that is complete, so I recommend we delete that.
Thank you very much. That was good. Any questions about the skateboard park? Anybody go?
No.
Ride a rail or anything?
It's been well-used. I've seen people that recently walk my dog back there, like in, I mean, we haven't had much snow, but it's definitely been used more so than it has.
Oh, 100%, yeah. All right, so here are some of my recommended goals, and these are just different things I've heard over the last couple of years or recent, some initiatives that, again, we can have some discussion. The first one is, is this has been a goal, we've put this on the goals, and then we've taken it off, but one of the things I've talked about for a bunch of different years is that we really have to update our streets and sidewalks ordinance about how we do sidewalks and things of that nature. We have, we have an ordinance that's in place. And again, for the new council, people think sidewalks are a relatively easy topic. They're not at all. They're not at all. They're very, it's a very convoluted, who has a sidewalk on their side of the street, who pays for it, you know, who? It's pretty typical, the person that's on that sidewalk, they snowplow it. But we have municipal sidewalks, how do you get a new sidewalk? Everyone wants a sidewalk until they have to pay for the sidewalk, then who? So there's a lot of things, and we hear, out of anything that goes on, I hear a lot about sidewalks on a lot of different positions on it, not just that everyone wants sidewalks. It's very, but this is, this is a big topic, but, and I'm sure, I know that, again, I think when you're out in the public, I'm sure you've heard about it, but this is one of these things with bandwidth. It's, it's difficult, and if you go way back, it kind of reminds me of, it's probably in 2006, 2007, we had to, we updated our sewer ordinance about who pays for what, pump stations versus the plant. And we got a grad student in from UConn who did a lot of the research for us, and it was probably a three-year project to update it, and it was, it, but the point was is that it needed updating. And then when we did our upgrade to the plant, everything was very clear on who was paying for what when we do pump stations now, but it takes a lot of time to do it. And so there was a couple of thoughts I had, and again, it goes to bandwidth, it goes to money, is that whether or not in the upcoming budget, they still have like a UConn grad student. We need someone to do a lot of research and go back and see when sidewalks were done, how many sidewalks in town still need to be done, like the repairs, that type of thing. But I do feel that this is something that we need to start looking at, and I think it's important. So again, whether we can fit it in is a whole other thing, but I do think that it's a topic that has a lot of interest from a lot of different people.
No, I, I agree that I think, you know, as anybody here has walked the streets, knocking on doors, and you obviously see the sidewalks underneath your feet, that we need to have that conversation. We've been talking about it for the last couple of years, but I think we need to get that ball moving forward, even if it's the fact of starting to research, or how do we get that, that person in here to start looking at that and developing a plan, and obviously, like you said, find out how much sidewalk we have and where to start, where to begin, what hasn't been done, and start developing a plan instead of pushing it back.
Yeah, I think so.
Brian?
Yeah, just a curiosity question. What is it about this committee that makes the cost a red item?
If you're gonna, well, you could potentially decide, now, first of all, we have all these sidewalks that are on private property that, in theory, need repair. Who is going to repair all those sidewalks, in theory?
I was just curious.
Yeah, no, but that's, that's something. That's the first one, our own sidewalks, the sidewalks there. If you still say that the homeowners are going to repair it, which could be, that's how it is right now in our ordinance, the other thing is, is that there's quite a bit of people that have asked for new sidewalks, and how the ordinance is set up is that the people have to pay for their own sidewalks. But again, is it really fair that everyone pays for the sidewalk, but the person, you know, only the people that pay for the sidewalk is the people that houses about it? Is that really fair? And would there be a subsidy from the town potentially? And so, again, it could be a green, it could be a green. I think the reality of it is, it won't be a green.
So the committee's green, but the output of the committee is going to be red.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think people understand that they are responsible for shoveling their sidewalk. I don't know that people are all aware that if there's a root growing through your sidewalk, and it is a giant crack, and there's disrepair, that you're really supposed to bear the financial burden of that. And I agree with you. I don't know if that's fair either.
Right.
And that's, you know, you know, in canvassing, you know, I, again, I, you know, I, there's sidewalks that I would like to see done, and I've assumed everybody would want a sidewalk. I have a neighbor that vehemently opposes a sidewalk because of legality. What happens if someone slips on ice, and you didn't put enough salt down, and things like this? So I agree, we think it would be a green issue, but I bet you there's more red in there.
There's a, and there's a lot to it. There is a lot to it about.
But it's important. I agree with, I agree with it being a goal. I agree with it being on here, for sure.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else?
No, I would just agree too, and I think, I think Kathy's example, the grad student who came in and took, and kind of put bones to like, you know, this, all these different pieces to understand, you know, our wastewater and our pumping stations and where certain things end is responsibility and other things take off. I think an ad hoc committee is certainly the first step, and I would, I'd wholeheartedly agree. And then hopefully, we can put more, more, you know, more structure to it, to kind of, to Keith's point, to really inform people, you know, what's what. I mean, it's pretty easy to say shovel your sidewalk. I think we have a certain understanding, but whether it be repair or a new sidewalk, I think we really need to
Right.
get, get that kind of really locked down.
That wastewater facility has been a ring success.
Right, exactly, right.
It's been a great thing for the town, so I think, you know, the work is, you know.
Right. It's, it's just really about, it's, again, it's not really that difficult. It's just time-consuming.
Yeah, no, it's harnessing the information, putting the information in the right format.
And getting it together.
Yeah, it's like, you know, because everybody obviously loves the idea of the sidewalk, being able to use the sidewalk, up until who pays for it.
Right, right.
And, you know, you meet so many people, like, they love it on their property, but I got burned a hundred percent of that responsibility from my neighbor across the street to come and use without a problem, so we do have to find some type of balance that benefits the town and our resident.
Right, and, and how the ordinance is written, and again, we did it ourselves, meaning we, the town, when, you know, again, when financial things are so tight, fixing maybe a small repair on your sidewalk, even on the town sidewalk, doesn't become your priority. And how the ordinance and how it used to work, and you're now talking probably 20, 25 years ago, is that town staff would inspect sidewalks throughout the whole entire town, and they'd inspect sidewalks. And then you'd get a letter, and it basically say, you have to repair your sidewalk. If you want to do it through a public bid with us, contact us. If not, we're going to repair your sidewalk, and we're going to bid, we're going to, we're going to charge you for it, and if you don't pay us, we're going to lean your property. And, and again, that's really how the ordinance is written. But you, you struggle, and we struggled as a town, when we as ourself way back couldn't pay to repair our own sidewalks. And so, again, what is the level that a sidewalk takes that before it really has to be repaired? And are you asking that homeowner to do it when back of the town wouldn't even do it? And then, again, people don't really like when you lean your property, and so that's not a great approach either. So we, we now really only try to, if sidewalks are in really tremendously bad condition, do we send letters to try to get them to fix it? But there are a lot of sidewalks out there that need types of repair, but that's an example of just fixing an ordinance that's just outdated, but what do you do? Is the town now going to go out? Again, the red. Is the town going to inspect all the sidewalks and repair everyone's sidewalk and start fresh? You know, is that, or are we going to, you know, so there's, there's a lot to it. There's a lot to it.
There is. Patty?
Yeah, I don't want to belabor the point, but, but I am fully in support of this. I know we put in on the strategic plan in 2018, and then in 2019, realized the amount of work it was going to entail. And it came, became a lower priority in 2019, simply because we didn't have the ability to do it. I, I think that it's something that's important, because I have talked to people who say they would be very willing to walk or ride their bike to the store instead of getting in their car. And I think about the traffic on Route 1, on Plainville Ave, going down towards Stop and Shop when you hit, anytime between 3:30 and 5:30 in the middle of the school year. And for folks who, I mean, that sidewalk is actually in good condition, but for folks who are looking to get from other places in town, I think it's also a way to have some moderate relief of traffic if people don't have, if people feel like they can safely walk or bike someplace.
100% agree, and one of the things, Brian, you'll probably, we've been pushing and doing various things in our latest grant, is one of the things that, again, trying to take a very large problem where we have Route 4, and you have big, big, hot, big roads where it's difficult to walk, or there's no room for a sidewalk or anything or a bike, but trying to get sidewalks to our Rails-to-Trail system. And, and there's quite a few neighborhoods that you actually can get, you can probably get a sidewalk and get you to the Rails-to-Trails, and if you're on the Rails-to-Trails, maybe you can't go everywhere, but there's a lot of places you can get to on town. And that's, again, goes back to the sidewalk ordinance, does, should the town potentially be paying for those sidewalks to get people onto the Rails-to-Trail system, because it's really a benefit to get everyone on the Rails-to-Trails. So again, I, I think your point is well-taken, but this goes to the study of, you know, repairing existing sidewalks, where are we putting new sidewalks, and who's paying for it?
A question, it just occurred to me. In Farmington, New York, I, my dad lived there for a while, and when there were new developments going up, the developer wasn't just required to put sidewalks in their neighborhood, but whatever road they were coming, whatever main road it was, they had to do a certain frontage of sidewalk as part of that development. And I know that would be part of the zoning ordinance through TPZ, but should this goal, should, like, should this incorporate TPZ in some way so that way we can mesh the town ordinance, but also the zoning ordinance to create?
Right, and I think, you know, I think we'd have something with that, but I do think that goes hand in hand of making recommendations to the TPZ, you know. If, after this committee studies it and says things and says, we would recommend changing your ordinance for X, Y, and Z that matches what we just did. And again, we don't have control, but I think that it would be working hand in hand with them to match our ordinance and some of the suggestions for the TPZ too. And again, which, again, as you're peeling the onion, it just gets more and more complex, which I think the ad hoc committee, I think at, at a minimum, starts just trying to put topics together of what we need to talk about.
Yeah, I think, I think to start off, it's going to be crazy no matter what because of so many, like you said, layers to that onion. Thank you. Anything else?
The next new goal is one we're working on right now, and I do like to put things in that we are doing, and that's our Legal Services Committee. We had our first ad hoc committee today, our meeting, so that's our goal to get that, get bids out and look at legal services.
I thank the both of you for all your time and effort into that.
The next one is a new goal, and that is to complete the new Westwoods Recreation Facility with construction beginning the summer, fall of 2024, contingent of receiving timely state approvals. So this would be our pickleball court and the splash park that's over at Westwoods Golf Course. So the thought would be is that in the winter of this winter, we'd get the project out to bid. We're still waiting for some approval, so we'll see how that goes. Then in the spring and fall of 2024 would be construction, and then in the summer and fall of 2025, the construction would be complete. There's still been quite a lot of work done on this already. It's kind of the behind-the-scenes that having a splash park, you need water. So they did dug a water line, and the water is now to the area. They've been designing the parking lot. We've been getting a lot of comments from the golfers just to make sure that we design it the way that we want to, but we are planning on designing the golf course. You know, so this is a work in progress. We have, we did get a grant, and then we're also in our budget to add to that too. So people are very anxious, especially for the pickleball courts. Yes. This is, again, part of, Brian, Kat had mentioned to me, you had some thoughts on that. Again, what we're trying to do is, it's a work in progress, but there, we don't have that much land that's not encumbered, and this is a nice facility here, and that having a golf course that has a, a good restaurant, and it is a good restaurant, but a restaurant with a nice deck outside that needs to be replaced, and having pickleball, and that would maybe help the restaurant, maybe having ice cream, having it be like a recreation facility of a place to go. And it's going to take some time to get there, but I know in the upcoming budget, we're looking to put the outside patio.
And it's going to take some time to get there, but I know in the upcoming budget, we're looking to put the outside patio to get that upgraded. We're also thinking about in the Westwoods Clubhouse type of thing is that should there be a window maybe on the other side where ice cream could be sold and stuff like that, that's closer to where maybe the pickleball people and the splash park people would be. So kind of we are thinking of all these different things to move. And then we have the Stone House Buildings that's there and that's a nice building. And we're, the inside is being renovated. We have money in now for some of that, but that's a very nice facility too. And what we can do in there. So it's kind of a work in progress. And I know that's what you mentioned to Kat about kind of making it a destination type of place.
A nice gathering place for the town.
Yeah.
We don't really have a larger gathering place, a public gathering place. And since we have all these family oriented activities, it would be nice if there were maybe some kind of a picnic area or gathering place where we could really get people together and.
Right. Yeah, I, I agree. And like Nancy was, Nancy Parent, our director over there was saying, you know, even a nice playground over there. You know, again, something like that, that would kind of match with the pickleball, not pickleball, the, the splash park area and, and things of that nature. And, and again, we have to keep on moving, you know, I think we don't, lights, you know, it's a, it's a long term type of plan.
Isn't that a quick thing, but just kind of plan that or consider it?
Right. And it's going to take me to my next goal, but the other thing too is some of the things don't have to be expensive either.
Right.
You know, some of the things like you can, what did you call it? Like you could play frisbee out there. You could do some different things, like it doesn't necessarily have corn, yeah, disc cornhole or bags. Like there could be, there's not that, that much space, but there is, you know, something that we could, I think it's underutilized for sure.
Well maintained facility with restrooms that's also doing these other multipurpose things.
Right. Yeah.
That would be nice.
My only note on this was that it's exciting. This is great.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and of, of course, we're going to have some, we're going to have some growing pains because, you know, we've gotten different things. Golfers potentially don't want pickleball and pickleball doesn't want splash parks and splash parks don't want this. And, you know, so there's, there's going to maybe be some growing pains when it comes to having, you know, we've gotten some comments that, you know, not having it be a recreational facility, but a recreational facility is going to help the golf course because it's going to help bring people in. And that the golf course is definitely used more for families and things like that. And so again, just to know that we are, there is going to probably be some growing pains of how we, how we do this.
The restaurant's going to do well.
What?
The restaurant's going to do well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Westwood is awesome. This is only going to make it better in the end. It'll, there will be grunking, but everybody will get on board.
Yeah. Like you said, I've heard from people too in the golf course that don't want the combination. But I think for overall, for a town that we are limited with land to, to choose and pick. You know, if we had obviously the ideal to go ahead and put something here or something there would be great. But I think to utilize that area of the town, I think that'll be a great benefit for that person running that restaurant to the fact that, hey, not only am I have one clientele and I have the option of other clientele and people coming in in order to make some money and make it more profitable for that person running that restaurant to go ahead and extend his lease and keep going further and doing things.
Right. And it's, it's a municipal golf course. It's supposed, that's, you know, it's again, that's the use and, you know, it's going to have to share with some of the things. So there we are with that one. This one, we did get a grant talking about our sidewalks. So this is to complete the construction of new sidewalks on Meadow Road with the construction beginning the spring of twenty twenty-six contingent of receiving timely state approvals. Again, this we've pushed out for a couple of reasons. One, I can't remember Joe or Keith when we actually said that we got the grant, right? It was, it's been, I think, a couple of months that we have said it. We have not even gotten the paperwork that has said that. So everything is, is slow. The other thing is, is that we need to put money in the budget to do that. And so we think if we break it out a couple of years, so we have the money for the grant, then if we break it out into two years with, so that's why the construction. The other thing is, is that this is somewhat complicated too, because to put sidewalks in does not mean you don't follow any of what the rules say for our sidewalk project. So we have to have public hearings. We have to do a lot of different things. So it's going to take some time and also the bandwidth to design it and do things. But we are, it is, I think it should be a goal and that we have a plan to get it done, but we work towards this plan.
And do we have to show the money first to the state in order to receive the grant?
We, yeah, and we did, we do, no, no.
Right.
So we, as part of the grant, have a match, which is over five hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
We don't necessarily have to show that we have it in hand, but we should start planning for it so we don't have five hundred thousand dollars all at once. So that, that's why we're trying to spread it out. And you'll see in the capital budget, it's incremental, kind of banking that money so that when it comes to when we need the money, it's there for us.
Okay.
But this is, we have not even begun designing it, getting all the state and local approval. So in general, it's going to take a while. And so I think this.
This is not happening this spring?
No.
Oh.
And the last goal I'm recommending is that I analyze the current operational structure of community and recreation department to best support the continued growth of both divisions, the community and social service and recreation. So one of the things I'm sure many of you are aware that we do have somewhat a different structure here in Farmington. We have community and recreational services. They're a combined group and we've had that for about twenty years and it's worked out really well. But one of the issues that we have, and it's not a bad issue, is that I would say out of all the growth that we're having in Farmington, they're both in the social service end of the government and it's also in recreation. And in recreation, for instance, the nineteen twenty-eight building is going to have a brand new community space. We're building pickleball courts, a splash park. We've talked about making this a recreational destination. It's too big for social services and community and it's recreation. So what I, that's my initial reaction. So one of the things that I want to do is that I would like to look at this and basically have them be standalone divisions. And it's have it on the own recreation division who would report directly to me instead of having it as a step down where it reports to community and social services. I think social services and Nancy Parent do a tremendous job, but the growth between us taking over the Dial Ride program, what goes on with rent control and the different fair rent hearings. It's, it's just a whole different av, uh, animal than what it used to be. The needs are much, much greater. And so I think that Nancy can spend her time, more of her time on that end. And it would be community and social services. And then we'd have a recreation department and then they would start looking at the different programs and what's going on there. Obviously that's something, the reason why it's in this goal is because to do that, I'm going to need a recreation, hire someone to do it, which would need a new position. I mean, I have to analyze it more and that's what I'm doing. But, you know, all this talk about what we're doing with recreation and different things is need someone to give direction, give plans, give things. So again, this is something that I'm hopeful that you guys would support in the budget and support on the strategic plan and then support it in the budget. And this is again, why we do the strategic plan, because if it becomes in the budget, the hope is, is that, I mean, if it becomes in the strategic plan, it becomes in the budget. That doesn't always happen. But again, a lot of the goals that are related to recreation and social services, I don't think we are going to be able to happen as well as they could if we don't split the, the two divisions. So that's something, that's one of my initiatives.
Yeah, I, I can't say enough the work that Nancy has done. And obviously it's coming out of COVID, like you said, between her job and human services and now everybody with the, you know, getting back outside. Recreation is a huge thing. I definitely think it'd be something that'd be easy for her to, to conduct her job for the human services, like you said, for everything that she's gone through and has expanded in the last couple of years. And now knowing that our town has grown, we're not just, you know, a soccer community. People have more interest in baseball, cricket, you know, things like that. So we definitely need to start looking outside and trying to.
And our golf course.
And our golf course.
And our golf course. I didn't say the golf course too, is that, you know, that it's the golf course itself, you know, it, again, having a director and things like that. I think that, that's a beneficial type of thing too.
I think it's, it makes a lot of sense. As you're going to provide more support for recreation, which is a hu, I mean, I'm like right in that age where I have, you know, that's very key to like my weekends right now. So I've seen some of that. Nancy obviously does a great job, as Joe said, but she's going to be able to, you know, really knock all that stuff even further out of the park with all of her extra responsibility. I think it just makes a lot of sense to provide the support, particularly with this Westwoods thing coming online. And then we talked about earlier, the, all the red areas for town staff, right? And so this is, you know, when there's so much red, sometimes, you know, adding another person, when it makes sense and it's not just adding for the sake of adding, which I think this makes a lot of sense, helps to turn some of that red yellow, you know?
Right. Yeah. I think it's, it's just time. It's, it's time. We, we really, as again, I think what Tim Kelly was saying earlier is that we, you know, always look at cost effective and try to do things differently. And twenty years ago, we merged the departments and you will not find probably any other town that has done like how we did it. But it really, and I really thank Nancy and her staff because she took on recreation and made it community and recreation. And it was always a big department and, but, and she did a wonderful job. But I think if she'll probably tell you, her real interest is the social service end of things. And now with all this going on, it's just time. It's time to have another, have a department, have a department.
Seems like a win-win for both those services.
So the question I have here would just be, I know you're going to analyze, and I, I agree with the comments that have been spoken so far. I'm just wondering, is this something that you're going to do and have a recommendation, you know, this spring? Or are you looking to look at this or operational structure and come with a recommendation later in the year? Because there's no timeframe on this.
I think, well, I think for me, the timeframe would be is that I would say there's a ninety-five percent chance that you would see it in the budget.
This year?
This year.
Okay.
Yeah, in, in the budget this year. Is that because if we don't, if we don't get someone in the budget this year, you're, you're out another year and a half. So some of the, the nuts and bolts of it, we're going to still analyze. But I think the splitting of the departments, we've been analyzing that for some time. And I think that we're pretty much ready to go on that. And that's why I think we're ready to say, I'm ninety-five percent confident saying that we don't, we want the divisions to be standalone divisions.
Brian?
I support that absolutely. I think there's more that we can do for the town without a whole lot of investment and a lot of time, maybe a little extra money, but really make a nice community gathering spot. And I think having two different divisions to support that would really be a good reason to have another person doing that because there's growth there.
Right. And, yeah, and one of the things, like I said, it's like the town, the two areas are social services and recreation. And again, having someone that can just start analyzing some of the different things. And one of the things again, is that like a cricket program, cricket, there's a huge interest for cricket. And again, someone to take the time and study it and where it can go and can we do it and how it will work. You just, and, you know, then people in the recreation department can do some of that. And it's just really leading of what, having someone to have the time to look and analyze some of these different programs and getting a plan. Not that it would maybe happen overnight, but again, starting to get some of these things in a plan, what that Westwoods facility would look like in ten years. What would, you know, what other programs do we want? What do we see in our future on different things? Those types of things.
Exactly.
Patty?
I, I think this is great. I, I've heard Nancy Parent's presentations at budget time multiple years. I, I have no idea how, how she does it all. And clearly these are the areas that are growing. And it's also what the community is looking for. They want more support. They want more recreation, more opportunities to gather, to get services from the town. And I think we serve them best by making sure that we have two strong departments that can focus on these issues that are somewhat related, but really diverging and different.
Agreed. And I think especially, you know, we've all, after COVID, what everyone has come out of, and you see it at the state level, all the state parks and everything, everyone's outside just much more. And again, some of it maybe doesn't need to be expensive, but just running different types of programs to get people outside, the recreational programs that you can do. And I just, like you said, I think that especially after COVID, people are looking, they have a different mentality about doing stuff outside and what the programs are and using recreation. So I think it's definitely time.
Sarah?
That makes sense.
All right.
When we add positions like this, do we, at budget time, do we see a, I don't know, job description is the right way to say, but exactly what this person's role and responsibilities are going to be or is it broad strokes? Or I, I don't know if I've ever been here when we've done that.
Typically the council would not be going through the job description.
Okay, yeah, I don't know if it just, because it's one of those things that if you, you know, with, with, if Nancy takes on a greater role where she is and we have this person, there could be that they can find, you know, synergy specific to those departments that, you know, could be cost savings. And I think whenever you talk about spending more money or adding positions, it's great to also tell people, well, these are all the things that we're going to get out of this money being spent. And then these are the potentials for where we can find money to help sort of pay for the new thing too.
And, and one of those things, when I say, you know, typically you would not see a piece of paper that said recreation director job description. But yes, when we, and we don't take on too many new positions, but what you would, you would at during the budget time, see some of the, I would be to justify the position, say what, what their role would be. And the other part of the equation is, is that a lot of the recreation programs, you pay to play type of thing. And if you expand different types of programs, the recreation fund can supplement some of that stuff. But again, and that would be part of the equation too. And, but it needs people to be able to manage the programs and push people to what those programs should be and what programs do you charge for and all of that. But you would hope, and honestly, our record, some of our recreation, most of our recreation programs now are doing very well. And they do make money. And that's something that, you know, helps to take back and put it back into the park or Tungusus Mead and the different things. I forgot what we just recently are doing at Tungusus Mead, but that money's coming from the recreation fund.
Yeah.
So.
There's things like, you know, like footstall is a big thing, indoor soccer and, and things like that. Maybe with some of these facilities with a director, you know, and again, I, none of this, I think, none of us want to denigrate anything. Work being done now, it's all been great, but there could be more opportunities for us to, to bring in money or bring in activities and that's, you know.
Right. Yeah. And if, again, with a department being merged, I would probably say our recreation department, the, the staffing size of it is probably the smallest around.
I believe it, yeah.
It's real, and again, it's because it's been merged into a department. And, you know, it's, it's very, very small for a community of our size. It's very small.
Anything else?
So that was the goals. So I think, I think we started with twenty. We got rid of a few and added a few. And I think honestly, I think we're back to twenty.
I didn't see you wanted to cut it down to fifteen.
I, I mean, I think that to me, we have to get the Farmington High School done. We have to dedicate the time. We got to dedicate the staffing to do that. And it's, it is a lot of staffing time to continue to do that. We have to, it's crucial that moving into a new town hall, we're demolitioning, demolishing things. It's going to take time, effort and money. We have to pay attention to it. So that's absolutely a main priority that we have to do. To me, that me being able to manage the operations and do things that I have enough time to do that is important because if I don't have enough time to pay attention to other things, then things go sideways. I think having the fire station building committees, I think that we have to start looking at that because it's, it's, we're, all the, the equipment is just going to break down. We need to, we need to address it. We need to address the fire stations and our volunteers. And I think, I mean, again, I think everything basically on this plan is something we have to do. Some of them that I wrote that were priority two, like I said, I think Parsons probably second time. I think the ad hoc committee, maybe just getting our feet wet with the sidewalks a little bit, just start that. Oh, obviously the budget priority going into the budget. That's, you know, we have to make sure that we have our budget documents, we get through the budget and that's going to take us to May.
Right.
I mean, that's top priority. We need to communicate that. We need to get information out. That's a, that's a lot of work.
How, how much does a lift decrease from the high school to the nine hundred wing?
I mean, the substantially.
Yeah.
It, it is a renovation, so there's more unknowns with that than a new build, but it, it is a lot smaller of a scope. There's still related site work that has to happen with the demolition of the remaining building. And then putting in the tennis courts and, and collaborating with the nineteen twenty-eight committee so that when the back of the building is demolished, the nineteen twenty-eight project goes in and gets started. So there's still a substantial amount of work, but the scope is much smaller than the new build.
Does, does the building committee stay in effect all the way until completion of the tennis courts?
Uh, through, yeah, it'll, it'll go through twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
So funny, you, we look at it and you see it right here, like, oh, such a short window, but then when you put it in that perspective, like, we still got a long way to go.
And we started in twenty nineteen.
I know.
And even before that.
Right. I mean, I think if we put some of these priorities on, maybe evaluate, and I'm always very upfront that if things are not, you get a quarterly report and, you know, basically saying, we're not moving on these. I do insist, though, if we don't, we can't seem to do it, it has to turn into a priority two, because if it is a goal, we're really trying to get it done. And but the council in the past, if we, the work, because we typically have a big workload, but we just sometimes prioritize, or we reevaluate in six months or eight months and see, you know, something's turned and we just haven't been able to do some of the stuff, you know. And if, you know, I'm comfortable with that kind of approach, but.
Obviously, it's a living document. So it obviously moves constantly from day to day. And I think if we look at it again in a quarter, and we reevaluate some of the things, and obviously listen to what you find out as far as this is easy to get accomplished, we're finding more, you know, red tape on this side to be pushed aside. So I'm good where we stand today as far as what we see in front of us.
I mean, I was wondering, I mean, I know in your note, as far as the, the motion on it was like, whether it's acted on this week or acted on next week on the 23rd, it seems like we're still in the period that, that could happen. And I'm just wondering, with your presentation tonight, maybe we have a chance to sit with your comments and then be able to introduce to Joe and you maybe things, some notes, you know, that maybe would be able to, you know, maybe be incorporated into the strategic plan. I mean, just how we kind of wordsmith the human relations and the, you know, racial equity task force. I'm, I'm just wondering if that's, if that's something that, you know, is, is something that people are open to.
Well, I know in the past, we, like I said, it's a living document. We've always adjusted as we went to the quarter. So does it really prevent you, Kathy, from going ahead and moving forward, one week's time difference? In order to, what, you want, basically looking at to table this right now?
Well, I'm just wondering if we, with her input on some of these things, I mean, I'm just wondering if, you know, just taking that and now sitting with the document, with the presentation that, you know, the, you know, the top notch presentation that Kathy made here, just to see if there is, like, some things, like even Keith brought up with, if it is a new position on the Parks and Rec, you know, which I, which I think is a fine thing, it's just, do we put some language in where you, you know, her language, do we add some language there that kind of captures some specificity maybe?
Because obviously, it will be coming back around to us next week as we start going through budgets. So all these, a lot of these items that you see may be reoccurring, like again, the position for that piece, and whatever else they go into. I don't think we're going to be directing any funds right off the bat to the firehouse. Maybe we start to get staff lined up and start moving there. So I don't know what that one week is gonna.
Okay. I mean, I'm just wondering too, about just helping her with the priority, moving priorities a little bit. I mean, it seems like there's a lot of stuff on Kathy and her staff's plate. And just wondering if we can help her even that way with seeing if we could, you know, and again, that's, I firmly believe the firehouse should be moved to a priority one. But if there's anything else that we could comment on, I mean, I'm just asking the question.
I think, I think we, what we do, and I think historically, what we've done too, is taken action tonight, start moving with the process. And then as she gets into the weeds with it, she comes back on her quarterly report and discusses, all right, I'm finding this, I'm finding that, we need to change this, rectify, modify, things like that. So I think that one week from this, from today to next Tuesday, doesn't really do her any service. So I think we just give her the go ahead to start moving forward. And then in that quarter time, have her come back and start talking to us about what she's actually been able to find out and to move, then we can make adjustments. And obviously, things might come up, you know, before, and as Patty said, once we get human relations going, we may need to find things that need to be acted next month and not wait until a quarter. So it's a living document. It's always going to be moving consistently throughout the year and for the two years with us. So I think it's always going to be time for us to go back and reevaluate something in order to correct, modify, or adjust. Anybody else have any thoughts?
I am, I appreciate all of the work that you've put into this, Kathy. And you've hit pretty much everything that I have thought is something that we should target. The, the struggle I have, and I think some of this is going to have to wait till we go through the budget to figure out where, how it's all going to be funded and supported and staffed. The struggle I have is just, again, what, what's reality and what, we all want everything. I didn't hear anyone say, I don't want anything. That, and I don't, so as far as I can tell, we are all in support of what you've presented. And I struggle with having the experience before of things just having to come, saying, nope, it's going to have to drop down, it's going to have to reduce. To some extent, I think the, the advantage, if we were to postpone this to the next meeting, is anyone in the public who has an opportunity to watch the video or listen to the presentation, has an opportunity to make public comment about what their priorities are, or what they think should happen before we move forward. That being said, I also hear Joe's point, it's a living document. People can still come in and make comments about how they want to move forward. I'm trying to create a little chart here as we were talking about which committees are being added and which ones are being reduced, because I think one of the biggest factors is, I, to Joe's point, we're not spending money right away. It's first, it's staffing these, it's creating the committees for the sidewalks, the firehouse. And those were the only two I flagged. But it's making sure we have the right staff, or enough, not the right staff, because we have the right staff, but enough people, so we're not stretching people too thin.
Right. And I agree with you. And I think, I think by going forward from today with this, I think will help us when we start going into the budget, because now we can actually start looking at things wholeheartedly and say, all right, you know, we need to actually put funds over here. So we need to go back to the document over here, strategic plan, and maybe push something to a, to a two, because this is taking more precedent of a, maybe a capital improvements project that we were not aware of, or we've been kicking the can for a couple of years because of COVID, the high school and stuff like that. So I think if we settle on this today, start working on the budget, I think it gives Kathy and her staff a better ability to evaluate the budget and what they can see, what can happen and what can't happen within their goals and objectives.
I think, I think it's, it's difficult with the new council to know what's going to happen. But I think, I think the budget is going to be really the time is because, you know, we have to see, and I haven't done the budget yet either, and what's happened in the staff, I mean, the staffing. I think that I wouldn't put some, I'm not going to put things in this thing that I think are unattainable for me as a staff person. It's really about funding. But as a staff person, I'm not going to set us up for failure on doing this. I've been doing it too long. That said, that when it comes to the budget, I will tell you that if things, you say, oh, this, or oh, that, we're not doing it, I'm going to come back and say, take it out of the plan.
Yeah.
Take it out of the plan. Because, and you guys, because you haven't done the budget process yet, you don't know what you don't know. And I don't know what we don't know either. But the thought is, and it's, is that things that are in this, that's what your priorities are, and that you do make priorities. And when it comes to the budget, and maybe you've realized at that point, maybe that's not your priority. Well, if it's not your priority, then let's get it out of the plan, because I don't want to spin our wheels doing something if we're not going to fund it, or we're not really going to do it at this point in time. So I think that you, again, you kind of don't know what you don't know. And we can put this, I mean, you can approve it as is. You can have it again, where people can have, you know, next week. Agenda goes out in two days. So this document is turning around and going back out again in two days. So to approve it, whatever you choose, it's basically, I'd make Patty, your suggestion, I think that was the only suggestion. I just make sure that things say priority one and priority two. And then other than that, it gets set up in, you know, it helps, because then my department heads start putting their goals together that matches the goals that come in here. They know what their priorities are, and we start the process. So again, I think the next meeting is really meant to be spent on talking about overall budget, kind of doing a financial forecast and doing some of that. We can address the strategic plan again. But unless you think there's things that are significantly missing in that plan that you guys want to have debate about, I don't think usually the council would have any more detail on it than what we've discussed tonight.
And there are goals too. So there, and to your point, and when we get the budget, if something radically different is presented when we see the budget, or if there's a capital item or something like that, then yeah, at that point, we would make amendments if we needed to, or take things out, add them. Yeah, the only thing that I would tweak at all, but I don't think that keeps us from moving on this tonight, would be Patty's point about, you know, making sure people that have equity in the, you know, racial equity task force that have already, you know, put work into that committee feel that, you know, understand that us putting it into human relations is wanting to make sure that that committee stays alive and that we want to, we really care about the committee. And so to possibly change the language on that, I would agree with. Beyond that, I would, I would move to go forward with this as presented. I agree with the goals represented here.
Then one of the things that just reminded me, when it comes to, again, the Human Relations Commission, again, a lot of the Human Relations Commission is driven by the ordinance. And again, that's something that I think is a need to get updated too. And that's one of the things for the Human Relations Commission. And again, I agree 100% what you've said, but I think the Human Relations Commission, and this is something I've been working on with Nancy Parent, is it used to have a very small role in the community. And we've been growing that role on what human relations should be doing for a town of, a town like Farmington. What is their actual overall mission? And that, I think, needs, again, it's fluid about, that's a whole thing for Nancy, the staff person and the commission to vet out. It's a, it's a much bigger topic, I think. What I see is what the Human Relations Commission should be doing for the town of Farmington. So to your point, I think it's, there's more that goes to that even, which again, is work, because now you have to update an ordinance and how you do that. And, you know, again, Nancy, if potentially, we'll have more time to have ideas on that topic if it's separated from recreation. So everything kind of has a, a plan.
So I forget where we landed with that. I mean, I know that Kathy had made a couple suggestions on that, and you had said that the second one you preferred with the slash
Yes.
racial inequity. Is that?
Yeah, that's.
So if we wanted to change that, like, does that need to be an amendment to the motion? Or can we just say as discussed?
As discussed, I think that's fine.
So, yeah, I, I take everybody's point, but I do, I know, once we get to budget, if there is something that we are unable to attain in this, we can address it at that time. So I would, this way, your staff can get going on, they'll see what is important. We can get started on that. And we can really get going into the budget process next Tuesday, right? And so to that end, I would rather put this to bed and start working on budget, I think.
So the only, the only, and I agree with Keith, I agree with Keith's, actually, his point on the racial equity task force as being, making sure that that's worked out. And I think, you know, we, we talked about merging in the slash. But I think if I had a hit on two points, it's that one. And it's also, I firmly believe in the creating of what you're doing with the human, with the social service side and the, and the recreation side. It's just that we, you know, putting together a budget, there's going to be other people coming here talking about their own budgets, their own staffing and so forth. And I just, I just want to make sure the fluidity of this.
When you say other people.
Well, when I say the Board of Ed has to make a presentation, there's other, there's other entities that are going to be making presentations, like the Board of Ed.
Well, the board.
Right, the board. And, and so they certainly, you know, have input on what they need to do as far as, you know, what, what their makeup is. And, you know, and there could be some budget impacts on them, obviously, there could be. And so I just want to make sure with, with that, you know, we're just balancing all of those things, and we're just not locking into something, you know, that precludes something else. It's kind of, you know, we've, we've kind of raised the priority that this is the, the staff position we're going to add, when we still need to hear from, from some others. That's all.
Yes. You need to hear from others on the non municipal side.
Correct. Right, right. But at the end of the day, you pass a budget that's the non municipal.
No, no, but I just want to make sure that you're clear that on the town side, I've made the priority that I want a recreation director versus IT, or this, or that, or that. Yeah.
Right. And I, and I agree with your analysis. I'm just saying that, you know, I just want to make sure people understand. I see this then, I'll take people's observation on this that have been through this before, that it's a fluid document, and it can be, and it can be, you know, changed.
I think Chief Higley could speak. The fire station's been on the board for three, for three months.
No, no.
It's been kicked because of other issues come up. So obviously, by setting forth today's plan and motion, again, gives Kathy, her staff, the ability to look at what they need to do. And when the budget starts, comes in, the Board of Ed will come in with Superintendent Greeter, she'll discuss her budget. And then obviously, we take everything into a factor and look at the whole picture. And then things, if things are reduced on the town side, then we look at what we're going to reduce on the town side. If there needs to be a reduction, is it services, it's positions, is it this or that? So, yeah, but at least I think this gives them the direction to start going forward and putting their numbers together, and to see if it meets with our goals and objectives throughout, plus with our budget goals too.
Brian, anything?
I've, I've been on this council a while. I've seen the, the plan put down. I've seen changes come, adjustments are made. I don't know if there's any hard or fast rules of when we can change the language in these documents if we choose to.
There's no hard and fast rules. And again, like I've said, I think three or four times, is that, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a guiding document to help me, it's on the town side, about what to prioritize and where to spend our time. And when the budget comes, you don't know what you don't know. I don't know what I don't know. And you're going to have to make hard decisions. But on the town side, this is where to drive some of these other goals, this is what we've put in. Now, if we can't afford to do it, we can't afford to do it. And that will reevaluate the strategic plan at that time. And we'll look at those different things. But again, we have to see the budget as a more comprehensive picture of it. And we're not going to do that for a few months.
I don't think any of them are really stretch goals, but there's something to shoot for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not spending any money tonight.
No, we're not spending. We're just trying to give Kathy and her staff a direction to start going into.
Right.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Kathy, you addressed my, my biggest concern was making sure staff, because as I said, we're going to figure out the budget when we get there. So the fact that you feel confident that the staffing part is, I'm, I'm comfortable with this.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, I'm good with moving forward with this tonight.
All right. So we just basically need a motion to accept the strategic plan as discussed?
As discussed.
So moved.
Isn't the second, isn't the motion already pending?
Well, as, not as discussed. So we have that change that you discussed.
Mm hmm.
So.
We good?
Yeah.
So moved.
And I seconded.
All right. Any other discussion on it?
Aye. I'm ready to vote.
One step ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Agenda item D2, I make a motion for a general discussion on the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
Second?
Kathy?
So Joe just asked me to add this on and just have a very quick conversation, just what's going to happen at the next meeting. So typically, what we do is we update our financial forecast. And actually, I think I just gave my budget book.
Now you want it?
Too much paper.
So we have a longstanding financial forecast. And what we do is we try to put out our financial forecast that basically shows what the upcoming tax rate would be based on historical data. And typically, how we do our historical data is that we make some financial assumptions. And, you know, our budget is made up of the expenditures, the grand list, the revenue, which then gets to the tax rate. So what Joe usually will do is that he'll look at our, what we historically have spent on averages for the education budget, the town budget. He'll analyze what our debt service, what we're paying now, what's coming off the rolls, what is in our capital plan existing, what potentially could be in the capital plan, if we have to take on any more debt, how much that would cost. He incorporates that into the financial forecast. We look at the grand list, again, just based on historical averages, how much it has grown. He includes that in. On our revenues, we look on what we've historically have gotten for revenues, and he puts that in. And then we look out for the next five to 10 years, and it shows what the tax rate would be if these financial assumptions come. We find it helpful to see that historically, this is what we've done, and this is what's on the books, and this is what the tax rate is. It gives the council an idea of what's to come, and what, if there's interest in targets, or what's going to happen. And Joe could move things around a little bit and said, well, if this year we did that, or if our grand list went here, how would that help our tax rate? So it kind of just gives you an idea of what, what to expect if, with our financial assumptions. And again, it's, you know, it is based on historical data. The things that I just want to make sure everyone's aware of is that one of the things that we did do last year is that because our, we had the shift, as Mr. Kelly had suggested, said, is that we significantly reduced our capital expenditures last year. We went from $3.8 million to $1 million. So in budgetary terms of very easy things, to go back to 3.8 or somewhere close to that is quite a lot of, you know, almost $3 million. So there's a hole in our budget if we added back this year. there's a hole in our budget. If we added back this year, that amount of money, you're adding that much money back into the budget. We typically probably are going to struggle to do that, because that's such a, a, a large increase again. But we have to see, you know, we don't know. We don't know what the grand list is going to be. We don't know what's going to happen. Lastly, we also, to help with the tax rate, we did take $1.2 million out of fund balance to help balance the budget. Our thought last year when we did it, and whether we haven't gotten to it yet this year, was, again, now you have a $1.2 million hole in your budget they have to make up. The thought was, is that we planned that, that we would take more money out of the fund balance this year. We've saved enough money to be able to do that. Probably not the $1.2 million, but I think Joe, when he discussed it last, during budget, we talked about half of it, kind of a step down to make up for that hole in the budget. So something along those lines. But again, going in, you know, the average taxpayer last year had a 9.75% tax increase. If the people that were on the council, you remember, some people didn't, some people did. Some people had really high tax increases, there was a lot of people that didn't. It just was the, the shift of what your value of your home was. But, and again, on average, that was the number. So we're coming off a, a high tax increase. We did come off, because of the revaluation and things like that, we did not, on this town side and the board side, our expenditures were flat last year, so we ran a flat budget. And so the tax rate last year was solely based on the revale, not on increased expenditures. So it is something, it's going to be, it's a, it's going to be a different budget year, for sure, how we came off of this last one into this one. So Joe, at the next meeting, will have a financial forecast for everyone. I will have available just history, so people have an idea of, you know, what is, what has been the typical expenditures on education, on the town, what we spend. And then the council can have any discussion if they want to give any direction to the town side or the school side on the budgets.
And when you say Joe, you mean the financial director, not me.
[laughing].
Just want to make sure everybody knew that.
Right.
That's not me.
Right.
Anybody, any questions? I know, obviously, we have four new members here, so I wanted to get this out in front of you, so if there's any questions about what's going to happen in the next week. So I figured this would be the time to start the process and the questions. So when Joe comes in next week and starts his point, you're sort of caught up to speed to what's been going on. Dave, anything?
No.
Amy?
No, I think everything that's in there is known and measurable. And I, that's where you start.
All right. Keith?
Yes, sir.
Sarah?
Patty?
Nothing.
Brian?
All good.
All right. So I don't think we really need to take any action on this. So we could just basically table this.
Yep.
Perfect.
Agenda item something, adjournment. I would like to make a motion, Joe, am I good to adjourn? You want?
No, no. Well, I just want to say, everybody, thank you for coming out. Please drive safely. I don't know what it's like out there, so I assume it's slippery. So please take it easy and have a great night. I will call for the adjournment now.
I make a motion to adjourn the January 16th Town Council meeting.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And we see it next Tuesday.
See it. What times for photographs?
I think we're 6:30, but it'll be on the agenda.
Okay. So photographs next Tuesday, everybody has a pen? Was Kathy able to get everybody a lapel pin?
Yes, yep.
Wish to wear one of your photograph or whatever?
Oh, no problem.
And we're good to go. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, everyone.